I hereby call to order this meeting the District 200 School Board. This is Hudson, would you please call the roll?
This is Crabtree.
Here.
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 Mr. Coleman.
Please, please. The innocent, pleasant gift.
Good question, Mr. Coleman.
Now we have a communication from the whole school.
Good evening. I would like to begin by welcoming all the members of the school board, Dr. Schuler, the rest of the District 200 senior leadership team, as well as everyone in the audience tonight for this school board meeting. Many people contribute to making Bauer a successful school, District 200's a successful district. We have an extremely supportive community and outstanding school district. The leadership of our District 200 administrators and Dr. Schuler certainly contribute to the success of our students. We have very involved and supportive PTA, active and involve parents, highly motivating students. But I think everyone would agree that some of the most important people contributing to the success of our students are the teachers and staff that work with these children every day. At this time, I would like to thank all of them, and in particular, I'd like to recognize and thank all of Bauer's teachers and staff that were able to be here tonight. So, thank you, please stand at this time. You notice they're true educators, they're in the back row. The teachers and staff at Bauer are able to keep the focus on teaching and learning while always doing what's best for kids. The driving force behind this focus is the collaboration of the PLC groups at Bauer working together to collect and use data, plan and target instruction to help improve student learning. I would also like to thank our PTA and our PTA president, Dan Rogers, for everything that they do for the students and staff at Bauer. Dan, you've been a good help. Former Bauer student of mine. For tonight, we have put together a short presentation highlighting some of the things that make Bauer special, and I would like to give a big thank you out to the students and staff that contributed to this presentation, and especially Jeff Lebron, all together. Thank you so much for having us tonight and being here at Bauer, and I hope you enjoy the presentation.
Hello. We would like to welcome all school board members and district administrators to Bauer tonight. We have a lot to be thankful for at Bauer this year, and we'd like to start with you.
Thank you, school board members, administrators, and facilities.
Thanks to you, Bauer students came back to a newer and very beautiful looking building at the start of this school year. There were many changes.
First, the school office was moved to the north side of the building. This means we have a new secure entrance that ensures all guests to Bauer must first go through the office. The office and two classrooms traded spaces, which means we have two newer rooms for our reading teachers and instructional classroom.
Second, the old carpet was removed from the hallways, classrooms, and library, and in its place is a beautiful, new wood laminate floor. Bauer is brighter and smells fresher than ever before.
The library was also very different. In addition to new flooring, the library was painted and new ceiling tiles were installed. Older cabinets that were not being used were removed, and in their space is a new flexible learning space.
Bauer would like to thank you for all that you do in making our schools a better place.
Bauer would also like to thank the Student Excellence Foundation.
The Student Excellence Foundation raised money in memory of one of Bauer's beloved former principals, Kevin Kane. The funds will be used this fall to buy flexible furniture and reading space furniture in our school's library.
At Bauer, we love our PTA. Our PTA has also worked hard to help make Bauer a great place. They plan and organize fundraisers and events for the families and students at Bauer. They also fund our field trips and buy our teachers new classroom materials.
Last year, we had a new event, STEM Night. Parents and teachers brought together almost forty different local groups to showcase science, technology, engineering, and math experiences. It was a wonderful evening.
This year, the PTA is purchasing additional Chromebooks for our students, and will also help purchase new furniture for our library. All of this and so much more. Thank you, Bauer PTA.
There are so many awesome things that happen at Bauer. We would like to highlight some of them here.
At Bauer, we also take time to thank our veterans. We welcome our veterans to our assembly followed by a party. To honor the veterans and our community, we prepare songs and skits that show our appreciation for their service. We also get to hear a special message from a guest speaker.
Students who are at the school volunteer to help in our instructional classrooms. They assist in art, music, PE, recess, and assemblies. Sometimes we go into the classroom and play games. This program brings our student community closer together and creates a special bond.
Every year, the Bauer staff and PTA put together a reading event. Last year's event was Reading Under the Stars. This camping-themed reading event was a celebration of reading two books, Holes by Louis Sackar and Runaway Ralph by Beverly Cleary.
Families read together and tense under the stars in our gym, played a live trivia game, played word games, and much more.
One unique Bauer event is the Ronald McDonald House Charity Basketball Game. For twenty-five years, our school has hosted a charity basketball game where fifth-grade students play faculty. All of the work of organizing and running the game is done by fifth-grade students.
All the money raised goes to the Ronald McDonald House Charity Organization. This event is incredibly popular, and the gymnasium is packed with students and parents and other spectators. Ronald McDonald himself makes an appearance at halftime.
These are just a few of the many wonderful things that we do at Bauer.
We hope you enjoy your time here at Bauer tonight.
And thank you again for all that you do for our schools.
And thank you, Bauer, for hosting us tonight. We appreciate it. Now, I know the staff would love to stay for the entire meeting, but this is an opportunity. If you have other things to do tonight, and I can't imagine what they could be, but if you want, you can, you're now here by the students. So, thank you for coming. If you want to stay, it's up to you. But thanks for coming. Are there any modifications to the agenda from any board member? There are none, we'll go to recognition and achievements. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Just one quick comment before we get into our recognition for this evening. So, in the student video, I think you saw highlighted a number of the changes that were made to the physical facility here at Bauer. This was by far, as we've shared with the board, the biggest of our construction projects between the secure entry, all of the flooring replacements, the upgrades in the library learning center, the painting, all of those pieces. It's not easy for a school to be without their office through most of the summer and be in temporary spaces, but I do just want to recognize and thank Mr. Coleman. He was an absolute champion during the construction project, and as staff came back, you know, I had several staff members that individually contacted me just to recognize the work that Mark did and just making sure that everybody got moved into their spaces, and he went above and beyond. And so, I do also just want to share with the board and thanking Mark as well, that I think as the board knows, there are going to be some celebrations as we move through this year, but this is Mr. Coleman's last board meeting that he'll be hosting here at Bauer. He's retiring at the end of this year, so I just want to quickly thank him for coming. We have one recognition this evening, and that's a recognition that the board is certainly aware of, but I want to make sure that we share with the community as well. Every year, the Illinois Association of School Boards has a recognition process where school boards have the ability to apply and be recognized with the School Board Governance Award. The School Board Governance Award evaluates and examines a number of the processes that both the school district and the school board have in place for the governance that it puts in place. And at a very recent meeting by the Illinois Association of School Boards, District 200 was recognized with the School Board Governance Award, and by the best of my knowledge and recollection and what's been shared before, I do believe that you are the only school board to have received this recognition now for consecutive times. So, this is a thank you to the school board, and what I have that I'm going to bring around to you in the celebration is a pin that the Illinois Association of School Boards has provided for you, along with this plaque that now reads 2018 on the bottom to recognize your fourth consecutive School Board Governance Award. So, board members, congratulations. Do you have anything you want to share? I will shake your hand. Anything you want to share as well?
Yeah, a couple things. I want to thank Diana and Chris Crabtree for working together, the three of us here to put the application together. It's a very lengthy application. The application asks us to define the vision we have, the goals, how we set our goals, the internal improvement plans we have as a board, how we evaluate our superintendent, how we communicate with the community, and the community engagement plans that we have. I don't think I over-stated it, that the application was over, interested with all the documents we had to attach and all the narrative that we had to insert into that application. And as Jeff said, this board is the only school board in the state as far as I know that has been awarded the School Board Recognition Governance Award now four times, four consecutive times. In fact, when we got it, three times consecutively two years ago, we were the first school board in the state to get it three years ago. So, I think it's reflective of the good work all of you put in to this, the long hours, and I appreciate that so much. So, I want to recognize Chris and Diana for putting the application together, and thank you for all of your efforts to make this award possible. So, thank you.
I just like the end of that. I see 2011 on the plaque. I think it's important to recognize all the other boards that have come before us too, that this spans way before the seminar, us sitting at the table, so it's really a recognition of a long range, a longer-term level of excellence and commitment that started a long time ago.
The next item is public comments for non-agenda items. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public to ask or comment on an agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions, but the district and public input on a variety of venues is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this deal, be respectful for the duties of the board and democratic process in the comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name, address the comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual, courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful. The comments sent to members of the board and staff, if a feeling or matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat. Present your comments to us in writing, and we will have at the tail end of the meeting public comments for non-agenda items. And the only person we have signed up for comments on agenda items is Harold Lons. Harold?
Good evening. My name is Harold Lons, and I am a resident of District 200. I just got a couple of comments to make regarding, I guess, tax payable and revenue. I went through the last couple of months of the check register, and I didn't notice any payment yet being made for the tax rebate to the Amazon property of where it was supposed to be $325,000 for this year. In the meantime, since the first town hall meeting, I did a little research on the Amazon property taxes, which is going to be flowing into our budget or into our conference. And I went to the DuPage County website, and their tax bill for this year for the school district is going $481,000. I know there was talk about them providing $700,000 to our budget, and in reality, it's only coming in less than $500,000. What I find very interesting is, like most properties, as we know, we're taxed, you know, seventy-five percent of our taxes go to the schools. The Amazon property, only about fifty-six percent goes to the schools. And the next figure is recipient of taxes is the city of Aurora, so that was pretty interesting to see there. And then the other thing I had is I see there's a discussion about the survey. I think it was a great idea to do the survey, and they talked about doing the exams before for winter break. It was interesting to see the results. My only question is, I would like to see also, will she show in high school parents only, and if they wanted to see winter break, I mean, shorter winter break, or Thanksgiving break, shorter, or no Columbus Day? Because if you look at the results, about twenty-eight percent of the respondents didn't have children in the schools, and twenty-nine percent of the answers, they said they were teachers, and then there was ten percent that was support staff. So, I think, you know, I think she broke out a couple different ways, so you get a better feel for how high school parents see the school break and the exams. That's it. Thank you.
Next item, on the agenda of the superintendent's report, Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Couple of things that I wanted to share with the board this evening under a report. Here, could you have video queued up for this? Perfect. So, I'm going to ask Jahan to play a video in just a second, but what I wanted to share with the board is that I think a little bit earlier in the fall, we mentioned a kind of a revamp that we were doing of our traditional State of the Schools presentation, and our desire to move that to kind of a shortened condensed video version update of the work that's in front of us. Timely that literally this video just got completed and got used actually with a couple of different committee, community groups that we met with today, both the Rotary groups, the AM and the Noon Rotary Group, as well as PTA Council meeting. But I wanted to share with the board so that you kind of saw this condensed version, timely in the fact that you're also approving goal plans this evening, and again, much of the work that the board's identified for this year, I think you'll see reflected in this five-minute video. So, play.
When the 2018 school year began, we at District 200 unveiled a new four-year strategic plan called Vision 2022. It's our roadmap for the next four years, and it's focused on our students and the best ways to unlock their incredible potential. Let's check in on what we've accomplished so far and the goals we have for this year. I'd like to turn it over to members of our leadership team.
We have a lot to celebrate in the Student Learning Department. First and foremost is DreamBox. The web-based program was purchased for all of our Grade III, IV, and V students. DreamBox is engaging math instruction that adapts to the skill level of each student, and the kids are actually asking to play it at school or at home, which is amazing. The Business Incubator program at our two high schools was a huge success. If you've seen Shark Tank, you're familiar with the concept. Students take a big idea, turn it into a reality, then pitch it to a board of advisors or Sharks to secure investment dollars. The incubator builds valuable business development, collaboration, and presentation skills. More importantly, this course teaches students how to fail and learn from it. What's on the to-do list for student learning? Well, video is everywhere these days. In fact, many colleges and companies now ask for a video submission as part of the application process. That's why we will develop a kindergarten through twelfth grade curriculum that combines writing, speaking on camera, video production, and digital citizenship to get our students ready. Whether they want to be a social media influencer or secure a more traditional career, they will need communication skills, and that includes both writing and speaking, and we're excited to help them with that.
Every year, I've seen our students' social-emotional learning skills grow. It's just as important as academic skills for our students, and having them will help them in their careers and in life. We will continue to integrate and expand social-emotional learning into classroom instruction, and also through service opportunities, problem-based learning, and co-curricular activities.
We take a multifaceted approach to safety at District 200. It's vital to build relationships with students so they can come to us when they see something, and it's equally important to have the physical infrastructure in place. To that end, we now have fully secure entries at all of our K-12 schools, and we now have camera systems at all middle and high schools. In the future, our key focus will be working with our District Safety Committee. It's a group of administrators and first responders, and we will work together to continuously evaluate our safety practices and protocols.
Plenty of great learning happens without a device in hand, but technology is crucial to learning and working. That's why we added thirteen hundred new Chromebooks to our fleet of devices. The devices we retire are given to families who need one at home.
As a parent, I love being in the loop when it comes to what my kids are up to. So, for District Turner parents, twenty-one of our websites were revamped to make all the things you look for front and center. We also had lots of success with Facebook Live shows that gave the community a real-time look into our schools, and we'll continue that. We're also launching a series of parent workshops that cover universal topics like helping with teenage anxiety, how to raise resilient kids, and navigating good social media use. Be on the lookout for those workshops.
Time to talk dollars and cents. Our S&amp;P Bond Rating was recently upgraded to AA+ just below the AAA rating, which is the highest level. We also celebrated our ninth straight year with a balanced budget. We have the highest financial ranking with the state of Illinois, and we're always on the hunt for budget efficiencies and grants that direct dollars to critical facility projects. And speaking of critical facility projects, here's my update on where we're at. After the April 2017 referendum, we reprioritized facility projects and immediately focused on three core areas: secure entrances, high-priority capital projects, and a solution to our early learning needs. I'm excited to share that we spent $4 million on nineteen construction projects this past summer. We added secure entries and completed high-priority work, and this coming school year, our focus will be on a solution to our early learning center.
As you can see, we have plenty to celebrate, but we also have our work cut out for us. Our sleeves are rolled up, and we're ready to get after our to-do list. Student learning, safety, construction work, and community engagement are all part of our vision this year, and I'm excited to see where it goes. We'll keep you updated on what's happening in your community schools. Stay tuned, and thanks for watching.
I just wanted to mention to the board, anytime you have an opportunity, you've got a community group that you're visiting with, you're called out to give a little update, that video is available. Certainly, our plan is to have it available for use throughout the year. We're going to obviously push it out proactively through our communications, but we borrowed that idea from the city of Wheaton and how they have done their updates so that that is always available throughout the year. So, certainly feel free, if you've got an opportunity or a group that you think we ought to share with, we're going to push it out whenever we can. Wanted to mention as well to the board, several of you have had a chance to attend and listen in at our first three listening town hall sessions. We've conducted three of them, one at Hubble, one at Monroe, one at Wheaton North. We've got one more coming up on Saturday morning at Wheaton North South. And really, I've appreciated the genuine dialogue and question that's, I think, come through the town hall sessions. We've had, I think, a good turnout at all the sessions, and again, I think some members of the community that I don't know that we've always had an opportunity to engage face-to-face with that have come and really asked some good genuine questions, I think in a spirit of wanting to understand. Wanted to mention, coming up on October the 26th, that's a Friday, that is, in the state of Illinois, Principal Appreciation Day. So, I think you saw this evening, we are grateful for the leadership in our buildings, and so, we are going to be obviously thanking our principals on that day, but I know board members in the past have liked to take advantage of that day to perhaps send a note to your adopted school principals, just to let them know that you're thinking about that. And then just one final update reminder that I wanted to share or give to the board. One of the things that Charlie has been working on with the District Safety Committee is, actually, it's kind of two related pieces, but they've been working on this concept called a reunification plan. So, in the event that we ever had to evacuate a building, could be because of a major safety issue, it could be because of perhaps a different incident inside the building where we simply had to evacuate and didn't have access back to the building, we want to make sure that we've got a plan in place for how we would move students off-site if need be, reunify them at an off-site location, and ultimately reunify them with their parents that may have to come to that location. And that's a big undertaking to really kind of map out what a reunification plan looks like, but timely that we've been working on it because a couple of our county-wide, city-wide first responder groups have also asked us to consider conducting over spring break a kind of a mass safety drill at one of our high schools. And so, it's going to be an opportunity for us to not only work with a number of our cross-government entities on how they would come together in response to a significant event at one of our schools. So, they're looking to do the drill to really have a training protocol to take to other school districts around the county, where it's going to be an opportunity for us to put in place this reunification plan and actually see how it works. So, we've targeted, I don't think all the details are finalized, but targeted a date over spring break where we would likely be looking to bring in as many adults as we possibly can to the building on that day, probably a group of a couple hundred students that would participate in that major event with kind of all of the county agencies. So, again, I think it just, it continues in the theme of our safety practices are continually evolving, and so I just want to let the board know that that planning was in the works. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
I really liked the video. We've done State of the Schools for the past several years. Our turnout is typically very, very small. Even when we videotaped it, it was still an hour or so that we had parents or community members that wanted to watch it to be able to get everything that you did in five minutes. I think now we're considering new school.
Moving on to the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. Number one, acceptance of gifts from Emerson Elementary School, PTA. Two, acceptance of gift to Lincoln Elementary School. Three, acceptance of gift to Wheaton North High School Athletic Department Boys Cross-Country Program. Four, approval of the renewal of Stanford Achievement Series and Analytics Subscriptions. Five, approval of professional learning expenditure requests for board members. Six, approval of bills payable or payroll. Seven, approval of minutes, September 12, 2018, and September 26, 2018, to the board. And approval to destroy the authorities' closed sessions prior to May 2017, as a law by law. And eight, approval of personnel report to include employment, reservation, retirement, leave of absence, administrative, certified, classified, and non-need staff. Are there any items board members want to move from the consent agenda? There are none, Dr. Schuler?
No additional comments, other than a huge thank you to the generous gifts that you're accepting and approving this evening.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I have just one comment on number five, the professional learning. So, that's to attend the school conference coming up in November, just to kind of as a quick kind of reflection back to the past year, all the video that I think we've been doing. I know we did video before, but it's certainly ramped up in last year, and I remember sitting and coincidentally going to the same session as Chris and hearing another district story about video and taking that back to this group, and so, very encouraged to see that the investment that we're making in time and money to do that is really reflected. Four, approval of the renewal of Stanford Achievement Series and Analytics subscriptions. Five, approval of professional learning expenditure request for board members. Six, approval of bills payable or payroll. Seven, approval of minutes, September 12, 2018, and September 26, 2018, to the whole. And approval to destroy the authorities' closed sessions prior to May 2017 as a law by law. And eight, approval of personnel report to include employment, reservation, retirement, leave of absence, administrative, certified, classified, and non-need staff. Are there any items board members want to move from the consent agenda? Hearing that, Dr. Schuler?
No additional comments, other than a huge thank you to the generous gifts that you're accepting and approving this evening.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I have just one comment on number five, the professional learning. So that's to attend the school conference coming up in November, just to kind of as a quick kind of reflection back to the past year, all the video that I think we've been doing. I know we did video before, but it's certainly ramped up in last year, and I remember sitting and coincidentally going to the same session as Chris and hearing another district story about video and taking that back to this group. And so I'm very encouraged to see that the investment that we're making in time and money to do that is really reflecting some of our own practices.
There are no other questions or comments before us. I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's all moved.
Moved on Mr. Paulson.
Segment.
By Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Grantree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Mappus?
Yes.
Mr. Berman?
Yes.
The consent agenda has passed. Now we'll move on to action items. One action item we have is approval of board action plans for 2018 and '19. Dr. Schuler?
Yes, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Dalquist, who really has been kind of leading the board through the Vision 2022 strategic planning process, which ultimately kind of led to this final step, which would be identification of your goal work plans for this year. One quick comment I'm just going to make in handing it over is that all of the plans that are in front of you this evening have been reviewed at the committee level by the appropriate or respective committee that will oversee that work, with the exception of the SEO committee that didn't actually exist at the time we identified this, but will soon exist and review progress. So, Faith?
Thank you. This is just the continued work of Vision 2022. We went through and made what our four-year vision is, and then sat with our administrators and different committees to highlight which key work would be done during which year. And these are the four main areas. You'll see that there's one for each of the commitments' areas. With student learning, the focus is social-emotional learning. With learning support systems, it's MTSS. And then we have all of the work with financial and facilities management, and then community and parent engagement. The last few board meetings have really highlighted this work, but now you see it as it would be presented to the public on the dashboard and under the board plans, and it begins to lay out what key steps would be happening throughout the different months of the school year. Like to remind everybody that we will be bringing updates on each of these goal work plans throughout the school year.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I just want to point out on the community and parent engagement, just the extensive nature of the plan and the number of touchpoints we have throughout the year is fantastic. So a great job by the team, and I really appreciate the times that they've not comprehended the plan. Really well done. Thank you.
Do we know what parent workshops yet, Erica? I know you mentioned anxiety. What else are we covering this year?
We do have two finalized as of right now, so November 7th, is Raising Resilient Drug-Free Children, speaker and expert from Girls' Dance. And then our next official one that's finalized that is drawn is in May, focusing on healthy social media use. But we are looking at, still examining, the appropriate speakers to bring in based on kind of where we are as a district with our SEO, while also understanding that teenage anxiety is very much a topic that parents are asking for us to address, and so kind of try to balance that. So we're looking at a couple of different options on that topic, and then also a topic on child development. So working with Dr. Schuler on both of those topics to identify some good speakers. And so we've got the two bookends of the school year, the first one and the last one set, we're finalizing once and between still.
I'm just wondering, I know that the Glenharde Parent Series has been so successful and they invite other school districts and ex-teen art, and we looked at partnering with anybody else to help a lot in our opportunities.
So actually, we did, in a sense, partner with Glenharde for the May workshop, and so we do have some, we do have a small budget for our speakers, and really that's put together through community engagement, psychology, and social work. So we work together to kind of figure out who we're going to bring in. And so we did kind of look at Glenharde's schedule, and so the speaker that's coming in May is actually speaking to Glenharde the night before, and so Glenharde is kind of paying for those travel arrangements, the hotel arrangements, and then we are working with her on that. So we are kind of trying to figure out how we can tag teammates on those things. So it's definitely been a conversation that we've had with Glenharde in particular, how to partner on those.
One more question. Several years back, I remember I went to some lunchtime rooms. Do we do those anymore at all with our social work department? Did you maybe have an hour at the community center, or you'd bring your bed lunch? Sometimes we did it internally, but we talked about topics that maybe weren't of interest, or do we do that at all?
So we were for, probably prior to last year, or three to four years before that, doing parent workshops almost exclusively at lunchtime, and our numbers really started to drop, even kind of marketing it as a lunch and learn, and we'd bring your lunch with you. And so moving into this evening, we have seen an increase in numbers, and so that's kind of where we focused our efforts. That's not to say that, you know, every, at the end of last year, we asked for feedback from parents, not only in topics that they wanted us to address, but also times of day, and the feedback, at least last year, was keeping in the evening.
One just idea toss out there, a webinar. So it could be a webinar at lunch, I think people could sit at their desks if they're at work or whatever and chime in for however much time that they have, but that might be a way to engage for small, specific opportunities and maybe to touch more.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions on goal work plans? Brad?
On the financial and facilities management, I noted that there's two separate committees that are involved in that, the facility committee and the finance committee. So I'm assuming that those two committees are going to kind of work hand-in-hand, not hand-to-hand, but kind of sequence the meetings together to kind of have one conversation, but in two separate independent committees.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing, too. Faith, we'd love listening to you talk, and I'm looking at, almost every single month, there is something for student learning, even if it's a two- to five-minute update at our meetings, if we can just hear about student learning on a regular basis, we'd love that.
Just a board advice, Chris and I, we're meeting with Jeff, I think it's tomorrow morning, to update and modify the superintendent's evaluation forms that we use, and we'll be integrating the goal work plans into that process a little more obviously than we have in the past, so more work there. I have one other question, and the community engagement, parent engagement, we don't say anything in here about the CAC. Is that by intention, or is that, you know, something that we don't consider part of this area?
Yeah, so here's what I will mention, Jim, is that on kind of the broader community engagement plan that Erica presents to the board that we discuss in December, we've recognized that as an ongoing feedback loop for the board. I guess, I don't know that I would consider that like a strategic new development around community engagement now as much as it's an ongoing structure that we've always used to provide and bring some feedback to the board. So not leaving it off because we don't value it anymore, we just really were trying to capture, to I think Rob's point, this is a whole lot of stuff around community engagement, and it doesn't even capture all of the efforts of what we're doing.
Eric, here are no other questions or comments. I hereby ask for a motion and a second to approve the board action plans for 2018 and '19.
Done.
Moved on Mrs. Grantree.
Segment.
Segmented by Mr. Hamlin. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Grantree?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Mappus?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Berman?
Yes. The action plans for, the goal action plans for 2018 and '19 have been approved. We now move to the oral report. Jefferson, full details brochure. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Berman. So we attach to the board's agenda this evening, and you have in your green folders a copy of the final informational piece that's going out from the district on the November 6 referendum question. I just wanted to kind of walk through a couple of key pieces with the board to make sure that I reinforced, I think, what are the key messages in this informational piece. And again, I think these are just good reminders of some of the questions that perhaps you're likely to get as we continue to move toward the referendum. So we've led this informational piece by just reminding everybody that Jefferson is not a preschool in the same way that there are lots of preschools around our community. It's an early learning center, and it's an early learning center that provides critical necessary interventions for three-, four-, and five-year-olds in the community that haven't identified special needs. So the majority of the students that attend Jefferson are identified through that child find process and in fact have a need that's being served. And I've shared with the board in the past and continue to share in any opportunity the fact that 80% of our students that go through Jefferson are able to transition into a mainstream, regular kindergarten classroom that significantly alters their trajectory through school and also comes at a significant cost savings over what a cost to educate in a more contained program. Yep?
So one question on that. Can you talk a little bit about the, how we identify those needs? Do the parents come to us? Do we go find how we work? How does that all add up?
Both. So we have a child find process, so our team is required, has developed some screening tools that parents have the ability to use. So as a parent is looking at typical development or looking at their child's development against some criteria that we've identified, they have the capacity to come to us with a request that the child go through a screening process. We also work proactively with some of our community partners to identify students that we're aware of. So there's a diagnostic team at Jefferson that does an initial screening evaluation, and if they determine out of that screening evaluation a need to do a more thorough evaluation, that's how that process works. So it's called child find, is the required protocol that anybody providing early intervention service goes through.
You said required, is that a federal requirement?
It's federal, so it's under special education laws, under IDEA, is where early learning comes from. We've identified, kind of on the bottom of the front cover of the full details piece, kind of all of the issues that surround the current configuration of the early learning center, and I think important to note that the issues that we've identified around ADA compliance, around the fact that therapies are being provided in hallways and closets, that the building doesn't have kind of central heating and cooling processes, that has no health office and is serving somatically fragile students, that's all over and above the fact that there are existing a little over $5 million in capital improvements that also need to happen at the building. So those two pieces together, I think, identify what are the issues that are surrounding that building that this board and prior boards have been working to solve. In the middle of the brochure, the middle two pages, we've identified the kind of the frequently asked questions that we've received as we've gone out to talk around the referendum. Probably the most common question is just simply, is the referendum going to raise taxes? And again, there are not dollars associated with this referendum. We're not asking for authority to sell bonds that would be a part of the bonded interest levy. We're asking for authority to build the building, and that in fact has been structured in or built into the district's budget for this year. We've provided some information just in terms of where that money's come from within the budget. Had that question a few times, and just where's that money coming from, and provided some, just some information about where those revenue sources came from within the budget that's come predominantly from some increases in state funding that we've made sure that we've directed to our highest priority capital projects. And then on the back of the brochure, again, we've just provided some specific information about how it is that we've reduced the size and the scope of that building to honor our commitment to be as fiscally responsible as we can, certainly with money sent from the community, and the fact that we did utilize a lease agreement to be able to fund the building out of existing operating dollars rather than needing to pursue a tax increase tied to this. So I do just want to mention a couple of final things to the board. I did get an email a little bit earlier today from a community member that expressed concern around a couple of points relative to information that's been put out. One concern point was that he didn't feel like it was accurate in describing this as a referendum that didn't come with a tax increase, and I think tied that back to the fact that the board annually goes through a levying process that, depending on how the board handles the levying process, does increase that levy year over year. That's not tied to this referendum question. That is an annual process that the board goes through under PTEL governed by PTEL, but not tied to the referendum question, but wanted to mention it to the board. He also registered, expressed a concern over describing how we came to the referendum question, and again, I think we've been very open and clear that it was in fact a lawsuit that was filed against the district that put the board certainly in a place of really having to decide how you wanted to handle that. And I think, you know, in the board's feedback and wisdom, your effort was to move that out to the community for referendum vote rather than to litigate the matter. There was a third thing, I think embedded in the email, if I'm not forgetting. I'll come to it in just a second and make sure that I share that. But any questions from board members on that piece? Just as a reminder, this final piece would, should hit mailboxes by the end of this week. It's been dropped to the post office and should get out by the end of this week.
Yeah, I do remember the third thing, the resident raised, it's a little bit in the weeds. The resident contended that, although our attorneys told us that we could issue the lease certificates, the attorneys didn't advise us that we could go ahead and construct a building pursuant to the Illinois School Code Provision of Authorized Leasing of Buildings. The lease certificates themselves would only be issued to buy the bank, assigned the bank so that it could finance or provide the proceeds to build a building. So unlike past referendum where we've gone to bond, there's a two-part, you get authorized, ask for authorization to build a building, and then you get authorization to borrow the money. We were now borrowing money to just build the building. And pursuant to the School Code Provision allows leases, we didn't need to have explicit authority to build a building under the School Code Provision, as a third on the resident raised. I have a couple of comments on that. Number one, what you just talked about, I think, I supported the going to the referendum in law, fighting the lawsuit only as a practical matter, because it would have taken us hundreds of thousands of dollars that I think would be a waste to prove that we were properly advised and could have proceeded in that manner, let alone the fact that we've already spent a number of dollars in the past. So getting to this point, so, you know, I think that, you know, that was a practical decision, not what I would call, what I believed was we had always done the right thing and we should have fought the lawsuit, it just didn't make practical sense to me. Number one. Number two, on the financing side, we've talked about, you know, shifting some state money around and so on, and we've also talked about using some of the Amazon money, which I look at as a new source of revenue. I heard a representation tonight that's not valid, okay, that says we're going to get about $400,000. That's a partial year, okay? The assessment was only for the year, the part of the year that that building was up, and in reality, we'll approach 700 or more thousand on a regular basis. And we have a couple of years where we have a rebate agreement with them, but, you know, over the 20-year lease period, we will receive that amount, 800 plus or more, as the assessment would potentially change based on that. So I, you know, those kind of terms of comments is what, you know, I think are the misrepresentations that are sent to the public. Third thing is that I think it's also important that we recognize that in order to continue to operate Jefferson without building a new building, we have to take probably $5 or $6 million in construction costs. $6 million in construction costs out of operating money to get it done, just to keep the building somewhat usable. And I'm talking about keeping the rain out and, you know, the water from any place. But so I think again, we lose sight of the fact that we're, you know, even if we didn't proceed in the way we have and all the prudent thought that's going behind this was that that was not a prudent way to approach the problem and it would have taken us out of what would be comparable to five or six more years of lease payments as we're now looking at it. That would have had to come out of operations. Now with this approach, we'll have those dollars available to deal with some of our major to be identified high priority fixes that have been literally been deferred for probably too many years that we're trying to catch up on. And so I think that, you know, that summarizes my position on why we made all these decisions and, you know, tries to correct anything that I think is a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Jim. That was helpful for me too. Quick clarification on the back page, when we talk about the things we've reduced the number of classrooms, square footage of the building and the cost, that dates back to the 2013 referendum, not just from a year ago, right? So this is correct.
Correct.
Multiple versions of refinement and further analysis that have had that impact.
I attended three community feedback sessions that had been hosted by the district. In one feedback session, I addressed one resident who asked why were we going to a referendum as opposed to fight the litigation? And explained, gave that response, Jim, that we didn't feel it was a use of, a wise use of our money to pay for litigation costs where we could just simply go to the community and be transparent about it. And that resident certainly was happy and pleased that we made that decision. And Friday, week north, again, that question was raised and I had to build, stand up and respond to that question. Again, the same response from the community member once we explained why we chose to go to a referendum as opposed to fighting litigation. They were so thankful we chose that option and thanked us for being transparent in our efforts to get to that point. And with respect to the lease payment, not only is it in the budget, but it's a steady lease payment, a fixed amount for the next 20 years. And unlike the tax levy that we address in November and December, that addresses increased costs we're going to surely incur through vendors, through other purchases that we make on a annual basis based upon the CPI, that lease cost is fixed for the next 20 years and it doesn't feed into a reason for a tax levy. So this is another that came to mind when I read this particular email today. Any other questions or comments from board members about the brochure? Okay, here we go on to discussion items. The first discussion item is the IASB 2018 resolutions. Dr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Roman. So no action required on this item this evening. Actually, it will be in November that you will take action on it. But I just wanted to call it out for discussion this evening to bring a little bit of clarification around the resolutions. So annually, as a part of the work of the Illinois Association of School Boards, that association identifies legislative priorities. Those come through the resolution process where they identify kind of their interests in terms of pursuing legislation. There's one in particular that I want to call the board's attention to. And again, important to recognize and understand that representation in the School Board Association comes from the diversity of our state. So it comes from all parts of the state of Illinois. And so this year, probably not surprising, given the experience toward the end of last year with issues around school safety and concern in that area, there were a number of resolutions that dealt specifically with the idea of arming teachers. And so I do just want to point out, I think, as what is, I think, a pretty clear message. This topic, the fact that the board will be considering this resolution that's been proposed does not mean that this board has proposed or expressed any interest in having conversation around arming teachers. It just means it's been proposed at the state level and so you've got to give whoever your delegate individual is some direction as to how it is that they vote. The way that the association handled the three resolutions is that they actually consolidated them to one. So the two resolutions, I think it was one and three, that have a do not support by it from the association. The reason that the association gave is that they've kind of consolidated them all into the second of those resolutions. And the resolution specifically does not suggest that the association has a position around the arming of teachers. It's really a resolution that would allow for individual districts to have local control in how they were to approach that conversation. Right now, there is no state law that would support that practice. There are very clear state laws that would not allow a firearm to come into a building even through something that happened to have a concealed carry. So there's no law that exists that would allow it, but I think the suggestion would be perhaps the crafting of law, some law that would allow some individual autonomy of a community to determine, you know, if in fact that's their interest. And again, it just fairness in presenting the whole issue, there are certainly some parts of the state, I know Brad has worked with school districts in many parts of the state, and there are some parts of the state where access to a first responder may be 20 or 30 minutes away, right? So if there were an event that involved school safety, it may legitimately be 20 or 30 minutes before a first responder could get to the building. And so their, kind of their framing around this issue is very different than high schools like ours where we have a full-time resource officer employed and in both of our high schools with easy access of first responders to other buildings. So I just wanted to kind of frame the discussion that way. I will tell you that while this will be kind of, I think, the board's decision to determine how you feel about the resolution. I don't personally endorse the concept of arming teachers. And I think it would be even dangerous to move toward legislation in that area because when you advocate for legislation, you also run some risk on how that's going to read and the way that that would perhaps apply to school districts across the state. And so I have some concern with just this concept in general and how I think it would be, could be applied into legislation. And I think perhaps there are some other solutions that the association could perhaps lobby for that may be a better legislative solution than arming teachers. I think lobbying for perhaps funding that could be allocated that would in fact employ trained, you know, security guards if necessary in places that don't have access to it might be a better approach. So again, I just, I wanted to frame that that way, give the board an opportunity to ask any other questions they have so that when we come to your November meeting, you are kind of fully prepared to direct or give your delegates some direction in terms of how you'd like them to vote on this.
I don't think I fully understand what the end result of this is. So what, when we get, when the meeting is completed and there's some approval of, or vote by delegates, then what? Is it just guidelines or feedback to legislators or was it?
As I understand it, Rob, it means that the IASB with its loudest will, yes, that's what the resolutions are directing the IASB to do.
So now I have two questions. There's one point on homeschooling. Does this change the accountability of what a district would have to do for homeschooling? So 6.11 on page 25. That's my first question. And then the second one is 708 schools as a polling, I'm sorry, 708 polling places in schools and allowing the schools to refuse to, or districts to refuse a school to refuse as a polling place. I don't know what kind of teeth that has. You know, be lobbying to get that legislation pushed, I guess.
So number one, when you get to the end, so actually once you get to page 14, Rob, those are all current positions that have already been adopted by the association. So that just, what that means is that those are things that they are currently interested in working on. I don't believe in the read of that homeschool policy that would significantly change our practice around that. I think their idea, their thought process around that is to make sure that expectations that are put in place for education kids receive outside of the school building matches a quality of, kind of of an expectation that the student would transfer. But I don't see that practically impacting our approach. Again, I guess it would depend on how the legislation is written. What was the other one you asked about polling places in schools?
So.
Yeah. Certainly, I believe, support that belief. I don't, I don't anticipate that it is likely that the law will be changed that would allow us to simply refuse to have a polling place moved into a school building. I think we may have better luck at pushing legislation than we perhaps consider shifting that voting day of local elections. So we can.
I have a question since I have lots of notes here. Are we looking for feedback solely on the idea of giving local control or we wanted to have a conversation about how we feel in arming teachers? So help me with how I can frame my questions.
Okay. Well, so the resolution is simply around the issue of local control.
So then I stick my comments to local control, which is much smaller than the whole base that I have here. So I want us to think about local control because what that's saying is any school district can kind of set that token. I'm thinking about using say a basketball gate for an example. So say Batavia School District decides to put some things in place and they're going to start arming their teachers, coaches, staff members in whatever way they feel, meaning as they feel, is appropriate and we are now sending our students to those schools. And coaches could be armed on the bench while our students are there. I think we need to be really thinking of what does that local control mean? I also have a question for the gun-free zone laws. Is it going to change gun-free zones? Are people going to be able to conceal carry and carry into a school now legally if that school district allows it? So I have some questions there in regards to that and I won't get into my thoughts on should we arm our staff or not until another conversation if that arises. I have those questions for now.
Any other questions, comments, Jim? Not that I am supportive or not, but do we at all inquire with our staff what their opinion would be on this? I'd be curious of that, you know, I don't, you know, they're on the front line, so to say, you know, and I would be interested if there is any input that might be thought about in that respect.
Yeah, and Jim, without a comprehensive set of feedback, I will tell you that's a question that's been asked fairly regularly as we've been out in schools, but much more around, I would be concerned if this were in interest of the school board in arming teachers. So what I have heard anecdotally, like, it would be unfair for me to suggest it as a comprehensive set of feedback, is that they would be very concerned if our board supported that practice.
I think Chris makes a very interesting point that I wasn't thinking of. When I read this at face value, I was thinking local control and as you said, there are school districts that don't have access to first responders nearby. And I thought, well, that, so we're talking about different parts of the state that are different than we are and they may feel they need to do things differently. But then, as Chris points out, you're throwing it open that it may have nothing to do with their physical setting and all about their opinion on having guns, teachers armed. And so that could be very murky if we don't know. I mean, that would set us up for needing to actively research and be aware of every district that we have in interaction with so we always know what we're walking into and what our decisions are going to be. So that does add an interesting element to it.
I think there's been, it's hard to identify the schools. I recall football games we've had with schools in the playoffs that were clearly much higher crime rate areas and so on. So, you know, it's pretty difficult to identify, you know. Let's say we talk about the Duquesne Conference, that might be one thing, but you know, if we're playing another school from, you know, another part of the state, that's a very different issue too. So I don't know that we could really set that standard.
No, I think another thing we need to keep in mind as we think about this resolution, at least the one resolution is that IASB will be using our dues and dues of all the school districts and states for lobbying efforts. And do we want our dues to be used for lobbying efforts to allow this school choice as is presented here in this resolution? Or would we prefer our dues to be used for lobbying efforts to try to fund a statewide program where school districts can use funds to hire trained security personnel to be in the schools? So it also, also keep in mind is how do we want our dues to be used, which we pay a fairly good chunk of annually to the IASB, how we want to use for our investments.
So I think when Jim and I ran for board in 2013, that was one of the questions. And I answered no emphatically, and I still answer no emphatically in terms of I would never personally support this in our district. Although, as you said, I've had the opportunity to experience other school district, other communities, and it's way different than us. I mean, we are looking through one lens. And while I'm not fully supportive of the resolution, I do appreciate the totally different circumstances that other communities and school districts have to deal with. And I want to give a little recognition of that. So I think some of these questions that are being raised, which I had thought about, a legitimate part of that is the legislative process. So if this was, if this was an issue that was brought by IASB to, you know, to that process, a lot of these details would work out. So I'm not, I guess my position is I'm not saying no, but I'm saying that, you know, I do certainly appreciate and understand the very different circumstances that other school districts have. You talk about secure entrances, there's schools that don't have any secure entrances either. They have a lot of other security issues and emergency response issues that we can't fathom. So I am very, recognize that there's other challenges that I think are maybe embedded in some of these, this rationale. The other thing that I want to mention here is number four, which we haven't talked about, which is another resolution, which I do support as it's being recommended, is the opportunity to make energy savings, improvements through other means of borrowing. I think, you know, energy, school districts, including ourselves, would love to make energy improvements that save taxpayers money and save operational costs, are good for the environment, reduce resources. So I think the way this is written, which was proposed by West Chicago High School, is actually a good resolution, the ability to go out and make these energy improvements without having to go to a referendum. So I want to weigh in as a professional that I think that's important. I don't think it's very fair to be in a position where you have to make decisions about kids versus decisions about saving energy and conservation and other costs which could then be diverted back to the kids. So I support the resolution as it's proposed for number four.
Any other comments?
Sure.
Going to be, maybe decide that? No, we don't decide that until the November meeting, but I will tell you, I'm a volunteer since I'm retired and from the board every year. I defer to everybody else to go to workshops that we, unless somebody else really wants
Unless somebody else really wants to do it. Next discussion item is the calendar committee survey results.
All right, I'm going to hand it over to, to Dr. Kyle. And there's nothing that says, uh, welcome to a school district like tackling the school calendar in your first couple of months on the job, but that's, that's where, where Dr. Kyle's at. So I'm going to let him come walk you through the feedback from the initial, getting no recommendation around this this evening. We just wanted to share this initial feedback and make sure that we identified any other questions, comments, requests for information that board members had before we bring a draft calendar back to your November meeting.
All right, I know why you all were smiling when I said I was on the calendar committee. So we had an opportunity to give parents of students and also support staff and teachers an opportunity, a week-long opportunity to give us some feedback on the next two years' calendars. We get 2,738 responses, about a hundred more than two years ago. If you look, we had parent responses, teacher responses. And if you flip to the inside, the piece that was, uh, we have kind of two conflicting pieces of evidence here from the survey. Eighty percent of the people who responded want to have finals before winter break. That's a great thing. But then if you look at the next one on the slide, if high school first semester finals were moved before winter break, we must work for a reasonable balance. And so starting a week early was not very popular at all, thirty percent. Starting two days earlier, sixty-five percent that had some traction. And then two days plus Columbus was about forty percent. And the difference here, just so you're aware, because I'm learning a lot more as doing the calendar committee. So if it was just two days, you just started the Monday instead of the Wednesday like we did this year, you just start Monday. That's a difference of fourteen calendar days between semester one and semester two. If you do two days plus Columbus, that's a difference of twelve days. If you do a week early, that's a difference of five days between semester one and semester two. The calendar committee is made up of six faculty and staff members and then four administrators that got together. We got together two times. We have another meeting. We did really drill down. We had a citizens comment about parents. We're going to get to that. But we did look at high school teachers that took the survey and identified as high school teachers. Sixty-seven percent agreed with finals before winter break. So with that data, where we are as a committee is we do want to do a mock calendar, send it out to the high school teachers and show them what it looks like and really get feedback from their angle. The reason why we wanted to drill into this is because two years ago, there was a question, but we didn't really drill down further. We drilled further and we think we need a little bit more data. If the, if the data isn't overwhelming from the high schools, what the board could expect is kind of a mirror of the last two years' calendars at the November board meeting. The situation with balanced semesters is something we'd want to go back to the high school and get the teachers' feedback. If you have a year-long high school class, that doesn't matter. But if you have a semester-long class, twelve and fourteen days, I think it may matter, but I don't want to speak for the high school teacher. So as a committee, we're going to get, we're getting together next week. We're also going to survey the high school teachers and see what that feedback gives us. We also can break down more in elementary and parents and what they viewed as well. But overwhelmingly, we were excited to see eighty percent wanted finals before break. But we also want to make sure that people have to implement it, the teachers of high school, if that's something they'd want to do. So from our standpoint, if, if we make changes, we will keep you in the loop. But if it comes back that we're going to have a traditional calendar and we're concerned about our students, our children in District 200 that are stressed over break, we can continually, as a district, put in some pieces of the high school and we have in the past to kind of alleviate the stress that the kids have over, over a break. So those are the things we've been doing as a committee. It's, uh, we got a lot of narrative feedback. I've shared that with the committee. Our next meeting is to look at the narrative feedback, survey the high school teachers, and then make a final decision, at least our proposal as a committee, to the school board in November. So that's where we're at.
Questions, comments with Dr. Kyle?
I'll start. This time I did not come with two pages of typed notes like I did two years ago, so. We've had many a discussion at the teaching and learning committee level about finals, meaningful finals, getting away from traditional finals. I can't help but wonder if we were to move the finals before break and that was the content based, could that, because I'm going to, I'm going to tell you as somebody who has spent six years, the past six years with a high school or in my house, the minute, the entire Christmas break or holiday break is being used to study. The first week back is called review, and then they're taking their finals. If we were to take those finals right before and use that time after break so that we don't have an equity issue between semesters, because I have a senior who's mostly a semester-based, he has semester-based classes. If we use that time afterwards for more of an application of skills, where they're not studying over break, they've taken that content and we've done it there. And they can do the same thing and repeat that second semester. They can take that content a week and a half before the school year ends, and the last week and a half of school is spent applying skills that they've learned and working cooperatively and all those things that we want our students to have available. So I think it could be doable if we just change a little bit of what are the purpose of finals? I want us to keep asking that question. I think here's a problem we have in the teaching and learning committee. I, I'm not going to let that one go. But then we need to look at what is the purpose of finals? Finals are changing in the world. You know, Jenna's had a conversation with me with her daughter's finals. What my daughter's finals look like in college. Then we need to really take a look at that and see if it works. The other thing is during finals week, our kids go to school sometimes three, I believe it's three of the days. They're done by like noon. So we're losing instructional time there each of those finals days. They're spending an hour before the final even begins. Sometimes she's sitting there because it's been built into the schedule an hour of studying time, a review time, which I don't know that you go into your finals still needing an hour of review time. I just don't know that that's a good use of our time. So I think if we looked at some of those components, I think it could be done and get those finals done before break. That's just my thoughts.
Chris, they do want to mention, just, just for clarity on the record, we, District 200 did try that. So there's been, in history, and again, what we can, I, I think the feedback is certainly of the committee, we can explore that option. But at one time, they did do finals before break where they, where then kids still came back and finished the semester. And, um, and feedback was not positive when, when that happened, but, but certainly in, in additional follow-up information, we can explore that question as well.
I, I have a couple of thoughts on this. Uh, we recently, we recently attended the School Board Association Page Dinner that talked about some of the issues that I, I linked to this, and that is the stress level on students. And I, I think anything we can do to reduce stress on students, better off we aren't. And I think, you know, that, that's not only finals, so that I think it's homework and limitation on hours of homework and so on, you know, so we don't continue to stress students out. That's, that's a big thing to me. And then I think that if we do incorporate something, you know, the way the world turns now, if we change, for instance, Thanksgiving week, you know, probably people already have reservations for 2019 at Disney World or someplace anyway for that period. So I think we would have to incorporate it another year out so that we don't kind of mess up with that. And I think that might have an impact on some of these things as well. So I just, I, I think again, the thing that troubles me the most about it is the stress levels. And I, and I think that's, you know, that's a real problem, and I, and I think we have to address it. So, you know, how we get around that, you know, I think that's the creativeness of what we have to achieve. You know, I, I heard on the, you know, limitation on homework the other night, you know, that was, you know, if you're taking all AP classes, you can't have eight hours of homework every night. So, you know, we need to structure or maybe evaluate this as a little bigger picture issue. That's kind of my opinion.
I think Chris and Jim basically said the same thing that I've been thinking. I, I, you know, I think it's different. When you're an elementary, when your kids are in elementary school, you don't share this perspective. Until your kids get to high school, the same parents feel differently about it. And I've felt the same way, you know. It's, it's very different, different when you have a high school student trying to study over the holidays and the stress and anxiety that they already have and not having that two-week break to really just kind of let go like many people in the workforce do because they take time off. So I really would love to find a solution. I thought, you know, the idea of doing some kind of, I think the word is summative assessment, you know, before the break and then another nine days or so. I think we have nine days of this first semester after the holidays. I, I don't understand why it didn't work. I didn't know that we tried that before. It seems very logical to me that you could rethink. I think too often we, we think about final exams based on kind of history. I think we can come up with some new innovative ways to maybe think, try to rethink that. I'm glad that teaching and learning committee is keeping me to push that because I really do think it's important to get these exams, whatever you want to call them, before, before the holidays. Can you clarify the twelve or two questions for Dr. Kyle? Can you clarify the twelve to fourteen days? And I'm curious also how St. Charles dealt with this, or have they dealt with this?
I can answer the last one because I was part of the calendar committee in my old district. And I know they just cast a traditional calendar for next year. And the year after, they're going to go to a week earlier, like April 203. Those, they're adding those five days. And then how it works is if you just add two days, so right now we have eighty-eight days and eighty-eight days that equals one hundred and seventy-six days. So if you add two days, you know, if you add two days to the first semester and end before winter break, you have to subtract nine days from eighty-eight because you lose the nine on the January side and you just add the two. So that's like, so when you, when you add two, like when you add two more days to the first semester, you still have an imbalance of fourteen days. You had three, you have an imbalance of twelve days. What? Right, you still need to get to one seventy-six. So other districts have found different ways to do it. And that's why we want to go back to the teachers and see where they're at. And we've worked with the teachers' union as well to, to model a calendar. Districts that end first semester before winter break also have like their teacher workday when you come back, which is also an elementary institute day in our district. So we are trying to throw the mock calendar out there. And part of why Dr. Schuler wanted me to present this to the board is we wanted to see where you landed on this because that'll give the committee some direction as to what we do next.
I have a question. How hugely important is it that first semester and second semester are exactly the same length? I mean, I know that there are semester classes. And I'll back up and say I had kids in high school in the, maybe two years that District 200 tried to do finals before break. And it didn't work particularly well, but I think because not enough thought went into what does it mean to have a continuing semester after finals, after the holidays? So teachers didn't seem to know what to do. Um, the kids didn't seem to know what the expectations were. So, you know, that maybe could work if it were really well thought out. But I'm wondering how important it is that it absolutely has to be that equal.
Yeah, and, um, so I think that's part of, um, information we gathered. I don't know that it, and it's not essential that they be absolutely equal because there are some factors. When you look at, at second semester, we lose some days around state testing. We lose some days around, um, when the bulk of like AP exams and some of those circumstances take place. So, uh, I, I don't believe that being perfectly balanced is essential. But I think there is kind of a fundamental question to like how much imbalance can you live with before it is truly impacting the experience that a student in a first semester-only class has over a student in the same class that, that has fourteen days longer, right? So I, I don't have an exact answer for you. I think that's what we're, we're trying to tease out. And candidly, I think it, it only, only prudent to get some input from those that are delivering that instruction in those classes to, I think, truly understand kind of what type of imbalance can we live with and still assure the, the, I guess, a similar experience if a kid is taking a, a first semester elective class versus a second semester elective class.
One more thing, just to kind of clarify on that. For the most part, we're talking juniors and seniors, correct? With semester classes, very few semester classes. I've been thinking, you know, maybe speech, you know, very few. Our seniors are gone the last nine days of second semester. So primarily, we're looking at the junior class that we're, we're thinking about here. I don't know that it's as big of a number of students that is necessarily impacting for semester classes. I'm just going to say for semester classes.
I don't have the exact number, but we could look into that and see how many that actually affects. And we can get that back to you at the November meeting.
Well, if you take any creepies in surveys, I think what you see here is absolutely, this has changed. Now, granted, there, there's some, there's conflicting results on the second question, but that's predictable. I don't find that very, you know, I don't find that a surprise. So I think the challenge among this group here is how do we find that balance to achieve what overwhelmingly says, we want them done. We want to start second semester after, after winter break and we move on. So we're not going to satisfy everybody on how we get to that, but that's a pretty, if this, this information being public, I'm certain. But this is, you know, this is a referendum on fix it. We want, we want finals before winter break. We want second semester to start when we get back. And so it's incumbent upon everybody to fix it. When do teachers have to, when do they do their grading on finals? I'm curious. I mean, are we put in distress now on the teachers that, you know, grade the exams over Christmas break? I don't know exactly how that process works, you know?
You know, I haven't been in a school district where you have first semester done before winter break. But when there was a discussion about teachers being done in their half-days, I have talked to some teachers in other school districts and they do try to get them done before they go home over winter break. There still is that workday. But from just a small group of teachers that work in different districts that do do it, they still have that opportunity to finish on those days. They get them done, and the workday is about getting ready for that second semester. But that's just anecdotal. I haven't had a chance to talk to a hundred people, maybe about seven different teachers from districts that do stop before break and then start up. So you have that workday. Right now, it's right around Martin Luther King Junior Day. That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be helpful to the high school. That's why we would talk about a mock, a mock calendar that would show it on that first date back.
I think one, it'd be great to see a whole calendar. So we can kind of internalize what the unintended consequences are of the shift. So there will always be some questions as to how it will work or not. What the one question we haven't talked about that wasn't sure is the intersection of the calendar and IHSA activities. Does that change when you can start sports or end sports? Because I think a lot of kids play in spring sports in the snow and then not be able to practice in the fall. I was curious about that.
Uh, IHSA has a set calendar. So they, they have a locked-in calendar for the day you can start fall sports, the day you can start winter sports, the day you can start spring sports. And that will, how we develop our calendar will have no impact on kind of when those activities start.
So I think the question you're asking is, should we take this back to high school staff to get further input? I totally support that. I, I would like to have that input around how, how can they help us solve the problem? Not do they like it or not like it? Because I think what you're hearing from the board is we want to solve the problem. I do want to come up with a solution where our students take finals before the holidays. That's, that's my opinion.
Any other thoughts or comments? Here in London? Uh, we'll move on. With reports, we've already received the monthly financial reports for September. We also received a file report. Board committee reports have been attached to the agenda. So any additional information, anybody would like to contribute, or the board committee notes that were attached? Where are we at? I'm sorry, you moved away pretty quick. Is this the board committee reports you talked about? Okay, yeah, I, I, a couple of questions. You know, I, I don't want to overstress some board members, but it seems like Chris is on a lot of board, so I don't know how to get at this. And, you know, I, I, you know, we should share the wealth, not that I want to volunteer anymore. But, you know, the point is that I, I'm amazed how much her commitment is, and I thank you very much for that. Yeah, it's true, it's true. And then secondarily, you know, I, I assume we've had some CAC meetings this year so far. And I, I'm curious some results of them, so I, okay. I'm curious some results of them, so I, and I haven't seen anything yet.
With respect to that, other reports of board members are going to report on the CAC. Jim will be attending the next CAC meeting, it's coming Wednesday. I attended the first meeting that was held in September. First bulk of the meeting addressed the referendum and mailings that were going out and community engagement plan, they addressed that. We got some feedback from the CAC with respect to the message going out. A number of committee members, council members, expressed the financial benefits they gain by having an updated facility that will help maintain more of the challenged children, helpless children, children that need IEPs, if they're fighting well, into a next turn to push that, those economic benefits. In fact, the feedback meetings we had last week, I think, was mentioned a couple of times by Dr. Schuler. I looked around the room, and a lot of folks knobbing up and down, and being about recognizing the financial benefits. Erica did address, gave a capsule summary of the community engagement plans she was putting together and asked for some comments, and there weren't a couple yet. And unfortunately, Charlie was talking about the survey, about final survey that was going out. By that time, I think there was only five minutes left in the committee meetings, and we just alerted them. But that was the thrust of the committee meeting, was addressing the mailings going out about the referendum and feedback sessions and continuing support for that approach that we were taking. Did I miss anything, Dr. Schuler? Any other reports from board members?
So is the CAC all built out, 36 people this year, good?
Yes, it's similar to what it's been, so pretty good broad geographic representation of the community. I think a good distribution of both residents that have kids currently in our system, some we've got certainly members that have kids not yet with us, some that have kids that have gone through the system, and some that have never had a kid that's in that. So, you know, we're 36 strong, full, completely full committee, and so I would characterize it as a pretty solid representation of the committee. We did actually have one community member that was new to join it this year that I think reflected a reality of when we talk about, you know, does that committee kind of mirror the demographic? The reality is we don't mirror the voting demographic of the community, meaning, you know, if that were the case, we'd have 75% of that committee without kids currently with us, and we certainly are not there, but I don't know as much as I think there's a desire to really have that represent kind of the complexity of our community. A lot of the issues we talk about are issues practical, two things that are happening within our schools. And so I just, I don't know that that would be a feasible composition of that committee, but.
One question or two questions with the Finance Committee notes. Lot of conversation in the notes about activities to feed, and want to make sure that we're looking at both, all extracurricular activities, not just sports, because sports called out a lot, but as we do that analysis, if you would like to include both sports, all extracurriculars. And then secondly, one of the things the Finance Committee is going to be taking a look at long-term is what does the future look like? Going out, as we get into future years, not just 20, not just current year. Do you anticipate when the Finance Committee might start talking about that and dealing with that?
You're talking specifically around the capital improvement needs after the Facilities Committee finishes its next meeting. So remember, the order of that is that the Facilities Committee is going to look at an updated set of priorities need by year? No, goes that, and then we'll go to the Finance Committee to look at or discuss options for it.
You're the check and review. Any other comments or questions about community reports? Here are none. Topics for future discussion will include...
This is the other reports, board members, so that we're on. Okay. We attended the ISAB or IASB, sorry, dinner the other night, and there was two topics that came up that I would like to consider in the future that we talk about or even we could talk about now, and I think we've had touched on one or two of these in the best. But one is the full-year kindergarten. The speaker at that meeting was the former state superintendent, and he made a big deal about full-time kindergarten and a big deal about early learning programs. And I'd be curious of, obviously, we are strongly, you know, addressing the early learning, but I guess, you know, certain parts of me say, isn't the natural offset of that a full-time kindergarten? I'd be curious either now or sometime in the future if we could maybe revisit that or discuss it again. I know we've touched on it in the past, and I know there's an economic cost, and that's a big part of it, but I guess, you know, we're still in the business of educating kids the best we can, and, you know, the implication in that was that, you know, and again, it was one man's opinion that, you know, those are really critical things, so I'd look forward to that, or if you want to make a comment at this point.
I'd rather not make a comment on it off the cuff. I think certainly if that's an interest of the board, we can circle that to a future agenda, I think. Just as an aside, though, I said I wasn't going to comment, I will. Faith and I have been, have been having some conversation around that because the shift in the funding formula may potentially shift one of the economic variables, may, right, in a way that may make it, you know, a little bit more feasible to have that conversation. But so I think, I think that's a good future agenda item. I'd rather talk about it when we've got time to kind of pull all the variables together, give you a current status of exactly how many kids are currently taking advantage of the tuition-based, a full-day option for kindergarten, which obviously has grown significantly. I think it's, it'd be good to kind of deal with it all together.
Yeah, I think again, part of going to those dinners that we approved some expense costs before, is those are the kind of topics we learn from that program. And, you know, and I think it's things that we should give consideration to in our district if they're applicable. And, you know, so I really enjoy those because it does give a little bit of thought outside of the box we live in. And so, you know, those were two of the key topics I felt that came out of that. Thanks.
Topics for future discussion include 2017-18 audit, 2018 levy. We have a chat with the board scheduled for October 16, 2018, from 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM at Leaning North High School. And then on October 24th, 2018, we have a community hall meeting at 7:00 PM at the School Service Center.
Want to point out, we also have Friday morning with the local elected officials, right? That's at what time and where?
It's at 8:00, and it's a...
8:00 at Media Elementary School.
Our next board reading will be November 14, 2018, at 7:00 PM at Washington Elementary School. We now have public comments for non-attended items. The same guidelines that I announced for public comments for general items apply to non-attended items. We have one speaker assigned, and that's Michelle Hutchins.
Hello, my name is Michelle Hutchins, and I was coming up here today to talk about the Leaning High School football program. This program has proven time and time again to break down our boys in football. From, my son now is a junior, from freshman year, his freshman year to junior year, there has been a significant decline in football players that continue their varsity. And that's because these boys have been broken down. The fact is, I went and talked to the head coach, and I was telling him how, what was going on with the program, and my son was ready to quit the program because of what was going on. And instead of him addressing the concerns, I get a shrug, like, so what, doesn't matter, why are you even here talking to me? My son goes and talks to him and doesn't get anything done. He, as a result of me and my son wanting to talk to him, my son now no longer gets minutes in playing football. So when she, as a parent, come up and you address your concerns to a coach who's supposed to be the mentor, a second, third, parent to your kid, they just don't care. It's not sure, no, no remorse, no... This has also happened to my nephew, my nephew quit the program because it's happened to him. And it's not just these boys, but it's multiple boys that is continually dropping out of the Leaning High School program. We have, Wesley was benched in the program as seniors, and now they're going into the NFL. But the coach has said, oh, we're not cool with them because we don't feel like they have the heart or they don't want to play. As a result, that's why the Leaning High School football program is continually declining in kids between freshmen, sophomore, into varsity. So essentially now, since I came forth and said something to the coach, my son is now, okay, he was first string playing offense and defense, went down to second string, now he's going to play in special teams. Now, Friday, he found out, no, you're playing JV. So you go from being a star to going down to JV. My son been playing football since he was four. Never once came to me and said, Mom, I don't want to play football. Son loves football, and now he's ready to quit the program. Not only him, but several other kids with him are ready to quit the program. But they have to stay because of us as parents. You started the program, you finished the program. So now my son is like, Mom, take me out of the district. I don't want to go to school in this district anymore. So this program is essentially breaking down these kids' confidence and spirits when it's supposed to build these kids up. That's all I have, and you.
That completes our agenda for tonight. There will be no further action. Come before the board, the open session, and I'll give my ask for a motion to the second to adjourn meeting. Someone will be there. Move on, Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. Masterson. All those in favor, signified by saying aye. We will close, and we are hereby adjourned.